Thank you STL TV. Calling this meeting, full board of aldermen to order, Madam Clark, please call, row.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Present.
Alderman Carter.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Valmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Present.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Here.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Here.
Alderwoman Peal.
Here.
Alderman Todd.
Here.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vaquero.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty-five present.
The Corrigan being present, before we begin, um, uh, today's meeting and we're going to be led in prayer by Reverend Ali Sanders, uh, the assistant pastor of Maple Temple, um, right in the beautiful Eighteenth Ward brought to us by none other than the great Alderman Jesse Todd from the Eighteenth Ward. But, uh, before we, before we begin that, uh, I ask everybody if you will join me in a moment of silence for, um, Judge Paul Simon, uh, who was also formerly the president of the Board of Aldermen, uh, just advocate for all of St. Louis for so many years. Uh, he will be missed, um, so please join me in a moment of silence before, uh, we begin, uh, with prayer for... Reverend Sanders, we're in your hands.
God bless you all on this morning. God bless you all. Uh, thank you all for this opportunity to the president and board members, and let's go ahead with prayer on this morning. If you can just, uh, quiet yourselves for a moment and let's give reverence to God. God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for another day's journey and a new beginning. Lord, we ask that you bless this session as is about to happen. Uh, Lord, we ask that you touch the president and the members, and Lord, let your way be done. Lord, let your will be done. Lord, let the movements that need to be made be made. Let the conversations that need to be had be had, and Lord, let the work of the city be done as well as the work of kingdom building. Lord, we ask that you touch each individual in their respective places. Help our minds to be free and clear and to help our hearts be able to do the work that needs to be done to connect to our minds and our souls. Lord, we thank you for this day, for your presence and your anointing upon this session. Bless every members that are here and those who are watching, and we ask that you just continue the work of this city and the kingdom building. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Thank God and amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Reverend Sanders. Let's give him a big round of applause and we hope to see him back again here at the board of Aldermen. Thank you for your works and thank you for being with us this morning. Alright, we're gonna, uh, suspend with our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. All the one from the nineteenth, you recognize on motion for our courtesy resolutions count.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move to adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
Second.
Move by all the one from the nineteenth, second by the Alderman from the twenty-second. Um, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you'll recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity this morning. I was trying to put together a surprise. We were working together, uh, with some colleagues, and I hope that he is surprised when he hears this, this resolution number thirty-seven. It's for former Commissioner Dale Glass. And I was, wanted to make sure that we did this because for me, it's about doing things decent and in order, and I watch and I learn from people, and as a new Alder person, Mr. Glass was definitely a testimony and an example of doing things decent and in order. And in his position, when he, if you came to the city with twenty-eight years of experience, so you can imagine what they meant for him to come here and then make the changes and then see the changes that he made. No matter how people felt, these changes, his work, all of these things are physical. They are real and they should be acknowledged. And so that is why I, I, I learned and I listened, uh, to the changes that were made at the workhouse, uh, through my colleague Alderwoman, Alderwoman Davis, and I went aside for myself, but not only that, and you can listen to comments back at Public Safety Committee meeting. When I would call Commissioner Glass, when I was making my decisions about the positions and the, the places, the spaces I wanted to be in about the workhouse, he always answered my call. Through everything, he always answered my call, and it wasn't yes or no answers. It was history. It was facts. It was background. And that is how you learn. That's how I feel that we should all learn. And then he always came and did his job. And if we all take an example of that, when people do their jobs, even through turmoil, even through disagreements, even through everything, we just all stand our position and do our job, then that makes the difference that he made, I believe, in corrections in the city of St. Louis. So that is why I wanted to introduce resolution number thirty-seven for Mr. Dale Glass this morning.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Uh, is Mr. Glass with us?
He is, but he's, he's, he is busy. He's driving. I asked him not to turn his camera on because if he was driving, but he might, he said he might pull over. So Commissioner Glass and his beautiful wife, if you all did pull over, turn your camera over. Remember what I said if you didn't, because he didn't know what he was coming to. But, uh, I did, I want, I, this was important. I think it's important that we show respect and regard and, and, and celebrate, um, people when they, when it's due.
Thank you, Alderwomen, for doing, for, uh, the resolution. Um, we, before we hear from Mr. Glass, uh, let's hear from some of the, uh, Aldermen, uh, Aldermen from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to move that we make this resolution and bank.
Second.
Then move by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, second by Alderman from twenty-third, um, that we make this resolution and bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of board, and I just want to thank the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth. Um, I was actually interested in, um, doing a resolution myself, and I talked to Commissioner Glass, and he's just such a humble person. Uh, if you ever really get a chance to talk to him and meet him, like the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth said, I mean, he's just one of the nicest guy. He's gonna give you the truth, whether you want to hear it or not. He's gonna do it with a smile. He's gonna be a gentleman. Again, he is a, has a wealth of knowledge. Um, I'm certainly was saddened to hear that he was going to leave, um, but I know, uh, sometimes people just get thrown under the bus for the sake of change, and, um, I'm just happy that he's gonna enjoy his life, I think, out in the country somewhere, um, but he's staying not too far, in my understanding, um, from the city of St. Louis, so I feel blessed that I can still reach out and call him or connect with him at some time and maybe even see him if I take a drive out to the country. Um, but I, I just can't say enough good things about, uh, former Commissioner Dale Glass myself. Uh, I, I think the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth just summed it up so well, and I'm just so excited and thrilled that she did this because I really think and thought that he deserved, um, recognition for all the hard work he's done with, with being over both facilities, uh, and with the support of good staff. And he will probably tell you that he did not do it by himself, because that's the kind of person he is. Uh, he believes in shared leadership and everybody being held accountable and responsible, but, uh, one thing we all know is, uh, you can regulate everybody's behavior. Uh, people are responsible for their own behaviors, but you can lead in a way that, uh, you encourage people to be successful in their endeavor. So I am just too excited for, uh, Commissioner Dale Glass today, and again, I can't thank you, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, enough for doing this, and I'm, I'm sure he's gonna appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman from the twenty-second. Alderman from the twenty-third. Dale, first off, God bless you and enjoy your retirement. This is probably coming from your, originally your biggest critic. I was beaten up on you at the beginning about everything, and turned out to be one of your biggest fans, uh, after you did all the improvements and the work. Uh, you know, I, I can't say, you know, from where, when you came in and where that started, and I, I just, even Kim was like, Joe, you're beating up on this guy. He's a good guy. I'm like, no, we gotta fix things. As things got fixed and things are so much better, that, you know, you, you, you turned one of your critics into your biggest fan, and I am absolutely sad to see you leave. Uh, you know, uh, what's interesting is, I know you left on your own, uh, but I still feel that you would have stayed had you not been, uh, put in a position that, that you were put in, but anyway, God bless you. Enjoy your retirement. I hope to join you soon. Let me know where that vacation home is. I'll, I'll come out and, uh, drink a mint julep or whatever, I don't know, uh, whatever they do nowadays. Anyway, God bless. Thank you. Alright. Uh, thank you, Alderman. Um, any further, uh, discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Uh, you all have heard me over the years talk about how we had, uh, some of the most experienced leadership in corrections here in the city of St. Louis. Over the years, we have gone through a lot trying to make those facilities somewhat adequate, but they took a giant leap and not only, uh, made sure that all of the corrections were coming in the right places for its improvements to facilities, but adding quality of life to those who had to be in those facilities. And, uh, at the end of the day, if we want to have better justice, then we need to do with, deal with those things. It's not about the buildings, but it's about the justice system. And, and they are proponents of helping us to understand how to change that as well. Uh, Dale Glass, uh, came highly qualified, extremely qualified, and had been managing systems much larger than ours. And so I appreciate all that he brought, but sometimes we get in our own way and we can't complete our task. Uh, having Jeffrey Carson there, uh, they worked well together. They were respected by the industry. And, uh, if you had ever had a chance to go to some of the regional meetings or they had, they brought their international convention here and talked to people from all over the world, you would know what we had here. But again, we get in our own way. So thank you, Dale, and I know the challenges that you had towards the end. Uh, it is really unfortunate that, uh, this is the, the tone in which you had to exit, but you brought expertise, and that is critical. And I know that you and Jeffrey Carson are still going to communicate, because that's who you are, and, uh, we will find our way, hopefully, prayerfully, if all of us get out of the way and let those experts do the job from the top to the bottom. Again, thank you again for all that you have done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Uh, Alderwoman from the, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, uh, would you like to read the resolution? It's up to you and to the record.
Sure. Resolution number thirty-seven honoring Mr. Dale Glass. Whereas Commissioner Dale Glass came to the city of St. Louis Division of Corrections with twenty-eight years of correctional experience after retiring as deputy warden of the Missouri Department of Correction Facility in Pacific, Missouri. And whereas during his tenure with the city, Commissioner Glass implemented meaningful changes for detainees and staff at both the City Justice Center and the medium security institution. He also focused on ensuring that the division was more transparent, creating a public dashboard for detainee statistics, providing an inmate locator and posting all contracts, policies and procedures, and other pertinent documents on the city's website. And whereas reentry services for detainees was a top priority for Commissioner Glass during his time at the division. In the first few weeks on his job, he implemented the transition from jail to community in, initiative with the St. Louis Alliance for Reentry, STAR. And whereas Commissioner Glass also partnered with Slay to Prison to Prosperity Program, P two P, designed to offer resources to detainees being released from correction, correction system. Some noted speakers of the program included Mayor Slay, Police Chief Dotson, Senator Jamila Nashid, and State Representative Bruce Branks Jr. And whereas other reentry initiatives included the addition of a full-time discharge and aftercare planner to the inmate healthcare services contract and a partnership with Integrated Health Network in the Relink Program. And whereas Commissioner Glass was responsible for an agreement with the St. Louis University to provide occupational therapy services to detainees. He also brought aboard volunteers to support diversion programs such as the Twenty-Second Circuit Treatment Court and Mental Health Docket. And whereas he addressed safety and security concerns on multiple fronts, he was responsible for the installation of new surveillance equipment at both facilities and expanded capabilities such as digital programs and visual video recording. Commissioner Glass worked to provide opportunities for custody staff to be certified in various roles through the American Correction Association and American Jail Association. And whereas Commissioner Glass worked to address physical plant issues, physical plant issues at both facilities to increase the safe health and welfare of staff and detainees. Projects including plumbing HVAC, electrical and building automation system upgrades. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen and Bank at the city of St. Louis, that we pause in our deliberations to recognize and, and recognize the many works and contributions of Mr. Dale Glass. We further direct it to the clerk of the board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end, that it may be presented to him at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. And I do, I would be remiss if I did not recognize, because nobody just jumps out and does something like this. Ms. Kim Maloney, if she's on the call, thank you so much. And Charlene Dinkin, if she's listening, thank you so much. Again, the works, like Alderman Boyd said, we know that he's probably going to acknowledge that he didn't do it on his own, but just the, the endearment they have for him shows that the work, again, has been done and will hopefully continue to be done, most especially the mental health piece that I know that he was working hard on, um, in, around the times that he left.
Alright, thank you, Alderwomen. That was a gr- great, um, uh, presentation. I just want to, before we hear from Mr. Glass, I just want to tell you, you know, as you know, this resolution is the highest honored board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does, it commits some of your works, uh, up until this time into the permanent records of the city of St. Louis. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when people research the records in the city of St. Louis, they will be able to read your story, Dale Glass's story, and know that you've passed this way and you've made a significant enough contribution, uh, to the city, uh, that we paused in our deliberations today to recognize you. Uh, we have given these resolutions out, but, um, I think this is one of the most consequential ones, uh, because of the way things unfolded, that it is, uh, you know, I'm just proud that we have, uh, solidly, um, documented, uh, your contributions, uh, for history, so people understand who and what Dale Glass, uh, uh, was and what you've done, uh, for, uh, the city of St. Louis. So congratulations, Mr. Glass, on a job well done. Let's give him the applause. Ms. Glass, uh, you're up.
Um, can you hear me, President Reed?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I truly appreciate it and accept, um, all the kind words with humility, and as, uh, was pointed out, I could not do it, uh, by myself. There are a lot of good people that work in the Division of Corrections. Last month, uh, the first week of, uh, uh, May was actually Corrections Week established by President Reagan in the middle eighties. Um, so the people that worked there listened to me, followed my lead, and did a lot to try to transform the Division of Corrections. I would say to you that, um, I have spoken with and communicated with a number of people on the board, and I've appreciated it every time. Uh, not a lot of people want to talk about the field of corrections, but I appreciate that opportunity. I have great respect for you all, anyone that would dedicate their time and efforts, uh, to do the work that you do. Uh, I will also say that the honor is mine. Uh, my, my life, uh, uh, philosophy or goal is, uh, to aid the least of these. And, and you gave me opportunity by working in corrections to, um, put my beliefs in action. And so I, I appreciate it greatly. I know you guys will be fine. Uh, this time I'm gonna try to get my retirement correct and, and stay on it, and my wife's already told me to go back to work, but I'm gonna try to resist that. Right now, I, I've been spending time with my great granddaughter, trying to explain to her why her great-grandfather can't get on the floor with her and crawl. So I, I do appreciate it and I thank you, and I'll probably won't be able to resist, uh, tuning in to see how the city continues to progress. Thank you so much for the honor.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Alderwoman from twenty-sixth, you recognize the close.
Thank you again. Thank you so much for taking the time out, Commissioner Glass, and coming on. Like you said, this is, this isn't the warm and fuzzy corrections, rather, isn't the warm and fuzzy thing. Nobody chooses to be in it, but they are when you make bad decisions, and I, again, I was talking to you about this, Commissioner Glass, have a personal testimony in that it does make a difference when, in the rehabilitation of people, when they go into corrections, if the system is working right and working properly. And you came in and you righted a lot of wrongs, and you were good and you, and you did a good job at it. So thank you so much, and thank you for, uh, President Reed and for my colleagues, um, for us coming together on this resolution.
Alright, congratulations, Dale. Enjoy. Enjoy your brief retirement till your wife gets tired of you and forces you to go get a job. Alright, thanks, thanks, and enjoy the rest of your day. Uh, and tell your wife we, uh, we, uh, we apologize and appreciate the fact that she let us, uh, uh, take some more of your time today as you all are, are, are on a trip. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. That will turn our regular order of business. Any introduction of honor guests? Any introduction of honor guests? Alderwoman from the twenty-third. Let me get my camera right. Uh, as always, I'd like to have my friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the tenth, like to wrap up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we're gathered here today on June eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, in nineteen eighty-two, on this day, the movie E.T. was released. But more importantly, this is National Corn on the Cob Day, which was started in forty-four B.C. by Mark Antony, when he said to Julius Caesar's funeral, "Friends, Romans and countrymen, let me your ears."
That's a good note to start. Approval of the Minutes.
Approval of the Minutes dated June fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you recognize on motion for approval of the Minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move we approve the minute, uh, the minutes from June fourth, uh, twenty-twenty-one.
Second that. Move by Alderman from tenth, second by Alderman from twenty-third. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Aldermen's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item seven, with anyone like take any bills or any resolutions off of any of our informal calendars. Anyone like take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars. We would dispense with line items seven through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill fifty-two, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one for the thirty-eight thirty-four Virginia Avenue area. Board Bill fifty-three, sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to section nine four point six six zero, revised statutes of Missouri as adopted by the voters of the St. Louis City on August the second, nineteen ninety-four. Pursuant to ordinance six three one six eight, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer of the city of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account One appropriating ten million five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill fifty-four, sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance appropriating the sum of twenty million one hundred and ten thousand dollars as, as described in section nine four point six zero zero through nine four point six five five, revised statutes of Missouri two thousand as amended for the period herein stated, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the transportation trust fund to the Bay State Development Agency for transportation purposes, containing the severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill fifty-five, sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to section nine four point six six zero as adopted by the voters of the city of St. Louis on November fourth, nineteen ninety-seven, pursuant to ordinance six four one one one, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer of the city of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account Two appropriating ten million five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars from the said sales tax for the period herein stated in the Bay State Development Agency for certain purposes, containing the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill fifty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in City Block four two three three as bounded by four-day Thatcher East Railroad and Antelope in the city of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill fifty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Carter, and, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in the ninth street between Cole Street and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive in the city of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and, and conformity with section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill fifty-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission make an appropriation for the payment of the operating expenses, capital expenses, including lease purchase agreements and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasuries Office for fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, in the sum of seventeen million seven hundred and seventy-three thousand eighty-two dollars, including one million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for capital improvements, containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill fifty-two. To wait for me, Board Bill fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five. To the Streets Committee, Board Bill fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second, read.
The following board bill was reported out of, with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill twenty-four, sponsored by Alderman Tyers. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on May fifth, twenty-twenty-one, to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from G, Local Commercial and Office District, to H, Area Commercial District, and City Block four five seven five, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block four five seven five and contain an emergency clause. The following bills were reported out of Neighborhood Development with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill seven, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated January the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, for the fifteen fifty-eight South Vander Van Avenue area. Board Bill eight, sponsored by Alderman Vocoro, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight ten Watson Road Redevelopment Area. Board Bill twenty-five, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-two fifty-six Vernon Avenue Redevelopment Area. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill thirty, committee sub-sponsored by Alderman and Gracia, and ordinance authorizing the Department of Health to accept Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Foundation award funding of twenty-eight hundred dollars through a contract with the National Environmental Health Association, containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees. President Reed, you're muted.
We will dispense with line item fourteen through sixteen. Third reading consent.
Board Bill nine.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for a third reading consent.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Move by on from tenth, second by on from twenty-second, a discussion. It's been moved by on from tenth, second by on from twenty-second, that we third read and finally pass our third reading consent count. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Alderman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman and Gracia. Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Bryce.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vocoro.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman.
Aye. I was, I.
Thank you. Alderman Evans. Alderman and Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
I can hear her saying aye, but her guest mic's not working.
Okay.
You can see her.
Yeah. Yes.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Twenty-six, I vote.
My vote is staying motion. All of them from tenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bill. Third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill nine.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session fix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions.
Resolution thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, S T C Warehouse, Inc., in the City of St. Louis, and Hands Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on first reading of resolution thirty-nine.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I ask that we move the, uh, resolution thirty-nine to, um, committee.
Uh, would you like to send it to HUDs?
Uh, yes, please.
Uh, it's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth that we assign resolution thirty-nine to HUDs and obtain a second on that motion.
Second. I'm sorry, I spoke over someone.
Uh, no, that's all right. We'll take you, Alderman, from the twelfth.
Okay.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded that we, uh, sign resolution thirty-nine to HUDs. Any discussion? All in favor, signify percent I.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carry. Madam Clerk, please make note, sign resolution thirty-nine to HUDs.
Oh, noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading and, and committee reports.
Resolution twelve, sponsored by Alderman Calder, recommend the City of St. Louis Port Authority provide personal property tax abatement and a sales tax exemption on construction material for R S, S T L, R, LLC.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the second reading, resolution twelve.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to final pass resolution twelve.
Move by on.
Bracket.
Uh, saying by on from the tenth and the twenty-second. Alderman from the seventh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, resolution number twelve is a personal property tax, uh, abatement and a, uh, sales, uh, abatement on sales tax, um, sorry, from construction materials for the, uh, small Hilton Hotel located at Fourth and Olive. Um, this is the, not the big ballpark Hilton, this is the smaller Hilton up the street, right on the corner. It's an old, it's a short kind of high-rise, it's an old bank. Um, this is a deal that was negotiated, uh, with S L D C and myself, and I guess the previous, uh, administration, and passed to the Port Authority. It's one of our first, um, uh, abatements to the Port Authority and, and per our expansion of the Port Authority, uh, last session, uh, was agreed upon that any abatements coming to the Port Authority would then come to the Board of Aldermen in the form of resolution, uh, which is what we're doing here. Um, it was reviewed by S L D C. Uh, Jonathan Ferry has scored this at a four point seven five, uh, out of five. Um, the total incentive's about four hundred thousand dollars, uh, on a eight and a half million dollar, uh, renovation of this hotel. Uh, the goal is to keep this hotel flagged, uh, as a, as a full-service Hilton under the new ownership. Uh, it certainly had its challenges. Uh, it's pandemic and, and, and frankly, it's just sort of reaching its lifespan. I believe the rooms are about twenty years old. Um, the new owners, you know, made this request, um, to the city, um, you know, we started talking about this, I guess, early pandemic, um, and, and here we are today. Um, you know, I'm keeping my word and my commitment, uh, to this project and to what was agreed upon with the developer. Um, and so I, I'm asking for everyone's support on this. Uh, again, it's about a four hundred thousand dollar incentive package, which a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is the personal property tax exemption, um, uh, which is basically on the fixed, the new fixtures and everything in the building, and then the rest of the incentive is, is, uh, you know, the sales tax, uh, abatement on construction materials. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and would ask for your favorable consideration on resolution twelve.
All one from the fifteenth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, members of the board. I, uh, rise in opposition to this today. Um, I think that there's a couple of things that we need to take into consideration when discussing this today. I think, um, one of the things that, um, we need to make sure that folks at this body recognize is that there is currently a twenty-year, uh, property tax abatement on this hotel, and there is four years left on that, um, that abatement. This is a personal property tax abatement, um, and, uh, an abatement on the sales tax, uh, construction supplies. And what I mostly take issue with is the proper, personal property tax abatement piece. Uh, because when we're talking about that personal property tax abatement piece, we're talking about, um, updating carpets and drapes and, um, and mini fridges and things like that within these, uh, within the hotel rooms. And, uh, when the developer spoke at the Port Authority meeting and talked about the, this refresh that was going to happen to these hotel rooms, um, they were asked, you know, how long does a typical refresh, you know, last for? And they said, you know, about eight to ten years. And, um, and so what's going to end up happening here is we do this, and then they come forth in another ten years, and they ask for another one of these, because then it's, it's time for another ten-year refresh. And I think that we're giving something, um, you know, to a major corporation here to do a refresh of their facilities that we do not extend to, um, the average homeowner in our city. Um, we don't extend this courtesy to folks who need to update their own carpets and drapes and refrigerators and, you know, interiors of their homes. Um, I, you know, I, I think that this is, I think that we have an opportunity to be doing, um, a reset at the moment and, um, and be more intentional about, uh, the, the allocation of these incentives. Um, the other thing that, that I, you know, am, am struggling with on this in particular, um, is in order for an abatement to be granted, um, there's supposed to be some sort of blight. Um, and under state law, you know, there's a, there's a pretty, um, you know, while it's a pretty vague definition of blight, um, you know, there, there is a definition of, of light and, um, and I, you know, I have to think that a hotel that is still operable, um, that people are, are booking rooms in for, you know, around two hundred dollars a night is not, um, not something that is blighted. And that, you know, while I do recognize that the hotel industry, the hospitality industry, has had a difficult, uh, last year because of the pandemic, we are on the rebounding edge of that. Um, the hospitality industry is starting to, um, come back up. I, you know, I think that this is, uh, premature, especially given their, um, their currently existing property tax abatement. And, um, and so with that, um, I'm, I will, you know, I will rest today, but I am, uh, opposed to this, um, because I think that they're already receiving enough, um, support and, um, and I don't think that we need to be, uh, continuing to, to subsidize them in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all the one from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, would the Alderman from the seventh yield for questions on the resolution?
All from the seventh, we yield question to the all one from the eighth.
Yes.
All one from the eighth, please proceed.
Thank you, and thank you, Alderman. Um, uh, there was some question raised about, um, the the assessment of the property having dropped over the last year. Um, we've gotten word, I think, from the assessor's office that there were some declines in assessments, um, to all hotels downtown. I think that was, um, what that came through because of the pandemic. And so I'm wondering if the, if the assessment on the property dropped twenty-three percent over the last year, are there already going to be some tax savings there to this ownership group that they might be able to use to put in at least for, um, you know, to, to move that money into purchasing some, you know, the, the new equipment or the new furnishings?
I, I can't speak to the, uh, proper, the real property tax, uh, any decrease in the value, I'm not familiar with that. I know that, you know, as recently as two months ago, this project was analyzed and approved and, and, you know, both S L D C, uh, the previous administration, I determined this, this was a good, worthy project, whether or not there's some savings on, uh, on, uh, real estate because of the decrease in value, I, I can't speak to that.
Okay. Um, is there, is there any willingness on the part of the, of the developer to remove the personal property tax abatement and just go with the sales tax abatement? I think, I think the, the personal property tax abatement is what is, I think, the most, um, distasteful, maybe, when, when this is being looked at from folks on the outside and that, you know, like the Alderman from the fifteenth said, um, you know, renovations on, on homes and furnishings and things are not, are not generally what we, what we abate. Um, is, is there any chance of, of revisiting this and, and only working on the sales tax there?
I mean, that's gonna be up to, I guess, uh, the developer. I mean, this is gonna need a final approval by the Port Authority. It's gonna be up to the, the owner and, and the Port Authority. I mean, I, I could tell you that, um, you know, in my time here, when, when you, when you commit to doing something and you agree to a, a certain incentive package, um, you know, I'm not gonna change the rules on people midstream, um, despite, you know, what the mayor's office wants to do. So, you know, if that's something they want to discuss with them, they can, but, uh, as it stands here today, now, this came unanimously out of the HUDs Committee, it was approved by S L D C, um, and, and I will be intending to move forward with the vote. I mean, whether or not there's some, you know, future renegotiation of this deal, though, that's gonna be up to, uh, room two hundred.
Okay. All right. Thank you for answering questions. I appreciate it. Um, I, at this point, I'm gonna need to be a no on this resolution as well, um, for all of the aforementioned reasons, but, uh, thank you for bringing it forward, and hopefully we can find a way forward, uh, to both keep the hotel functioning and, uh, do the best work in the interest of our taxpayers. Thanks.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Yes, Mr. President, with the Alderman from the seventh yield to questioning.
Alderman from the seventh, will you yield the question to the Alderman from the twelfth?
Yes.
Alderman from the twelfth, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, the board, and thank you, Alderman from the seventh. I want to preface this with, I appreciate the tenacity that you're bringing to, this is a project you dedicate yourself, not dedicate yourself to, but that you, uh, you agreed to present, and you're sticking to it, and I appreciate that. You know, I do appreciate that. In your brief statement introducing this resolution, you noted that some of the rooms, if not all of the rooms, are about twenty years old, you know, so on and so forth, give, give or take a few years. Can you tell us how many rooms, uh, what room capacity this Hilton has, by chance? It's a bit of a left-field question, I understand, but.
Uh, I don't know the key count on this hotel. Give me a second, I'll look.
Okay. And if that's, you know, you don't have to dig through any emails or anything of the sort. I just wanted a rough idea of the sort of size and capacity of this location, which is four hundred olive, correct?
Yeah, it's four hundred olive. I'm trying to get you a room count, I just don't remember.
Okay. I appreciate it, and I will not, uh, submit questions to you while you're trying to, to answer my first.
No, go ahead. What else you got? I'll, I'll, I'm trying to find this.
Okay, and I, I appreciate your due diligence in that, and please know that a rough estimate will also suffice for, for my purposes, for my question. Um, you know, even if they're twenty years old, one thing I want to point out that they'll have as amenity is air conditioning, right? That's something that we don't have at City Hall, for example. And as I look at photos of the interior, Alderman from the seventh, I mean, we've got marble floors, we have updated lighting, we have all these other things, and I look at these photos, and then I look in my neighborhood, which is one of the most beautiful wards in the entire city. I'm absolutely biased. Um, I cannot present that as fact, but it's true. And I look at my neighbors who are having issues keeping their air on or paying their personal property tax, and I just think that, I mean, this is a Hilton, Alderman from the seventh, that we're offering a tax break to. And yes, the pandemic was, was insurmountable in some ways and for numerous industries, but. But as I look at the proposed resolution and as I look at these, these photos of the interior, some of which are available on their website, so on and so forth, I, I cannot support this, you know. And we're at a truly blighted area. I think I could throw my support behind it. And I rescind my question for the number of rooms, alderman from the seventh. Again, I appreciate your due diligence, but we're offering a tax break to a Hilton, a very nice Hilton from the available shots that this, that this hotel is providing the public. And I just, I'm sorry, I can't support that while my neighbors are having issues putting food on their table, while my neighbors are having issues keeping their air on, and you're asking me to approve a tax break for, for a hotel. So I stand in opposition, and I'm going to be hard-pressed to be swayed, alderman from the seventh. I, I yield back to the board.
All right. Thank you, alderman from the 12th. Alderman from the 23rd.
I just have a question. So, and this is a resolution, but do we even have? I know it comes back to the Board of Aldermen, but whether we pass this or not, doesn't else, SLDC, aren't they, don't they have the authority to do this with or without us? I just, my understanding when we did this, because I know I hesitated when we did it, that even though it comes back to the board, it doesn't really matter what we say. Like, for instance, if this failed, they'll still go forward with it, I assume.
Is that to me, alderman?
To anybody, I'm, I'm just.
Alderman from the 23rd, would you like alderman from the seventh to yield to question?
That's fine, or, or if you could explain that. I just was curious. So when we, when we did this board bill.
Well, if you, if you have a question, I can ask the.
That was the question, whether we pass it.
Hold on a second, alderman from 23rd, would you like to request alderman from the seventh to yield for question?
Yes.
Alderman from the seventh, will you yield the question until alderman from 23rd?
Yes, I will.
23rd, please proceed.
That's fine. And, and I was welcome to anybody, I'm curious, because that was a curious thing. When we passed this last year for SLDC to be able to basically offer tax incentives in an area, I don't even know how, I, I don't think I noted on it, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. So if this fails or passes, does that even make any difference?
Yeah, I believe it does. So you may recall, we had a healthy debate about expanding the bounds to the Port Authority. And, and part of the deal was basically, you know, while the Port Authority under state law can go ahead and approve abatements under chapter 68, it has the ability to do that. As part of the expansion, we agreed that those would come to the board for approval. So I, I suppose theoretically, they could ignore, you know, this body and, and move forward even if we didn't pass the resolution. But I don't, I don't think the Port Authority would do that. I think if we vote this down, they will not approve the final abatement. I don't, I don't think that's going to happen. I think it would set a dangerous precedent if we did one thing and then they did the opposite. I don't envision that happening.
Okay, it was more curious and more just a learning thing for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All the women from the 17th. All the women from the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. President and the board. Can you hear me this time? Okay, great. I'd like to rise, and I am concerned with this particular abatement and sales tax exemption. The reason is that the Hilton has made over $800 million in the first quarter of this year. And so they strongly have funds to be able to do this in terms of updating the interior of this hotel. So I really am concerned regarding having abatement again because Hilton has made $800 million this quarter. Thank you.
Thank you, all the women. All the ones from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I just wanted to give clarity to a number of statements that have been made, and then I'm going to make a request at the end. Understanding the blighting premise, it includes more than if there are buildings that are deteriorated, which we do have a number of them in the downtown area, and that's why it meets the test. We also have a number of vacancies inside those buildings that are occupied with businesses. So that is another indicator on blight. We also have another indicator on blight as how that area is as far as crime and a number of other things. It meets that indicator because it's horrific. We also know that in a, in that particular census tract, it meets the indicator of blight because there are a large number of affordable units in that area as well as section eight certificates that have been issued in that area. When we get back to another reason why moving from the further definition of blight, that area downtown, we've gone through a lot of extensive planning to try to accommodate some type of convention tourism improvement for the area so that we can make more money in the city of St. Louis. We're not doing everything that we could do at this point because if you're only dealing with the refreshing of the rooms, if the gentleman made the statement that about every eight to 10 years, well, as we look at this, we know it's been 16 years. So it's way overdue. And to have people return, you must have updated units. That's what people look for when they go out of town, they rent a hotel room. They expect it to be updated. The other part to this is for us revenue. You can't talk about somebody's bottom line because you don't know everything that gets you to the bottom line. So they may have made $800 million, but we also know because we had almost no travel and people were not renting hotel rooms, that there's a loss factor there. There were employees who were laid off their jobs, and we're trying to get back on track. If we never, ever provide any tax incentives, it is impossible for us to increase the revenue that comes into the general budget. And all those things that have been indicated that we should and could do for our residents, there's no money there to do it because you never want to have any new businesses. You don't want to assist other businesses in maintaining and growing. So that is, that is not how economics works. You, you have too many other factors that you must consider. The last thing that I wanted to suggest to, to you, sir, for the body, there is a training program that we can attend, and I would suggest that if we could find the funds, that we do a, a number of alderpersons at a time, for all those who are interested, to really understand how you prepare a development. So you'll be trained on pre-development. You'll be trained on the preparation of your pro forma. You'll be trained on the economics and how it affects the area that you're working in for that development. And it also provides you with the understanding of the various departments that can assist you with effectiveness. Most of the people that are in our departments that do these analyses, they've already had that training. I was fortunate enough to have it as well. Jill, who retired from CDA, we actually took our training together. So I think that there's a lot to be understood, and I think that once all these analysis have been done, it's all right, it's all right to ask questions. But do you have all the facts? And we can't just operate on, oh, woe is me. We've got to also look at the other side of what we do in the city of St. Louis and make sure that as we move forward, we are providing opportunities for us to earn more money so that we can do more on behalf of citizens. But if you never want to do that, you can't help anybody. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, all the women from the 19th. Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, will the alderman from the seventh yield for some questions, please?
Alderman from the seventh will yield for question until alderman from the 16th.
Yes.
Alderman from the 16th, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, alderman. Alderman, do you roughly have an idea of how many full-time employees are at this location?
Yeah, it's, I believe it's 50 FTEs. And just to answer the, earlier, the alderman from the 12th asked about the rooms. I had looked that up. There's 195 rooms in the hotel.
195 keys, 50 full-time employees.
Yes.
Great. Alderman, just to clear up what I think is a lack of knowledge around maybe the hotel industry and, and real estate development associated with the hospitality industry. This is not, to my knowledge, it would be very unique if it is. This is not a corporate Hilton-owned facility, right? This is real estate developer, risk taker, owner, who has just, quite frankly, purchased the flag from Hilton, which probably gives them access to their reservation system. This is not a building owned by Hilton and/or operated by Hilton Corporate, is it?
That's correct. Hotel is owned by a group called Rockbridge Capital that buys, frankly, distressed hotels and tries to turn them around. Yeah, no, I mean, it's not, it's not a corporate-owned hotel. So yeah, I guess Hilton made $800 million last year, but they don't, don't own this property. This group would pay Hilton for the right to have, use the Hilton name and flag and reservation system. And frankly, that's, one of the reasons we're doing this is we want this, per the hotel study, done pre-pandemic in downtown, which calls for more, more full-service hotels and less, you know, discount hotels in the downtown marketplace. We're trying to keep one of our full-service flagged hotels with, with the main brand in the downtown market.
Right, right, which we know brings jobs associated with that. That's great. I think that, that's helpful, alderman. Thank you. I think that should clear up some things. So if you're, I know it's certainly vogue to, to make sure that you could put your thumb down around what's being called corporate welfare and an oversubsidized business. But I, I think it's an important distinction if you were basing your votes solely on the fact that you think Hilton is saving pennies as a result of this. It's not. It's a risk taker, a real estate developer who owns this piece. And Hilton is simply actually getting money as a result of this. And I can certainly, I do want to speak to you because it was, it was mentioned that the hospitality industry is on the rebound. As someone who's very close to financing hospitality assets and hotels, that couldn't be further from the truth. In fact, hotels can't even get debt at the moment, right now, because the outlook is dubious at best. So there needs to be a considerable amount of owner equity that's being put into any hotel facelift, any hotel development right now. The hospitality industry is a large creator of jobs. And it is important that we incentivize risk takers, particularly in an industry that is incredibly hard-hit by the economic shield that associated with the, with the pandemic. So I rise in full support of this, alderman. I appreciate that the Port Authority is, is moved forward with this project. It's important to keep our brand and our hotels downtown. I assume that the convention in business, I don't know if you've talked to anyone there, but my, my guess would be that they're probably in full favor of this as well. I have, I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, alderman from the 16th. All the ones from the first.
Mr. President and members of the board, alderman from the seventh with you.
Alderman from the seventh will yield the question to all the ones from the first.
Yes.
Alderman, I believe this hotel was developed sometime in the 90s. Is that correct? Do you know?
Alderman, it was either the late 90s or the early 2000s. I believe it was originally, I think Drury developed it.
Right, exactly. And when did Rock, what is, who is it that you said owns it now? Rockford Capitalist? Is that who you said?
I believe it's Rockbridge Capital.
Rockbridge. And when did they purchase it?
Right before the pandemic.
Okay, and so, and they purchased distressed properties? So this was already a hotel that wasn't living up to what it, we expected to do even before pandemic? Is that correct?
I mean, it was, it was, you know, they purchased it with the understanding that it was going to need, you know, substantial renovations.
Okay, but, and it already was well into the 20-year tax abatement, which had have been originally granted. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so, once they purchased it, you sat down with them and the prior administration, and you looked at, oh. Because when I think about people who buy distressed properties, they're looking to make a profit, which is nothing wrong with making profits. But that's exactly, they look for the most money. And so you sat down with these venture capitalists, and then you said, what could we do to help you? But they had already had the property when, when, when you met with them? Or did you meet with them prior to them purchasing the property?
Uh, no, I don't believe, I, I'm trying to remember the series of events, alderman. It's been a while, but I don't believe I met with them until they closed on the property.
Okay, and so can you just tell me a little bit about how you came up with? So they already had the 20-year property tax. What, why was it, I'm, I'm trying to understand your thought process about giving them a property, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, personal property tax abatement to get new spreads just for, I'll just say, refreshment. Why was that needed?
I mean, it was, there was a gap in the, in the financing. Basically, they were able to borrow or spend a certain amount, and, you know, the renovations were going to cost X, and they had Y to spend. And so to fill that gap and to show that, you know, we're supportive of the, of their efforts to rehab this hotel and keep it as a Hilton flag. This was the incentive package that was created between myself, SLDC. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, 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 I interrupted you. I'm so sorry.
No, I was just saying this. So, so through those negotiations, this is what we came up with. I mean, it was, it was clear that, you know, extending the real property tax abatement was, was going to be a non-starter. So, you know, we, that was not on the table. We, we decided that we would move forward with, you know, a personal property tax exemption and a sales tax exemption on construction materials.
And how long, again, how long is the personal property tax to be?
It's 10 years. I believe it's 85% in the first five years and then 50% in the second five.
Okay, and was this renovation required by Hilton in order for them to keep the name Hilton? Do you know?
Yeah, they have to make upgrades to the property in order to keep it flagged as a full-service Hilton.
Okay, and you said something about the Port Authority through chapter 88 could go ahead and approve abatement. And is that all abatement or is that just a, a property tax abatement, you know?
Alderman, chapter 68 of the revised code is the Port Authority, the governing statutes. They, the Port Authority has the, you know, the states, the state power to do real property tax abatements as well. Yes, it does.
So I'm sorry, because you kind of broke up a little bit. So they can do real property and personal property under that? Is that what you're, your understanding?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And do you know what the occupancy vacancy rate for this hotel was pre-pandemic and what it is now?
I don't know what it was pre-pandemic. I mean, I, you know, the, the occupancy rate in most of our downtown hotels right now is hovering around the 20% occupied.
And is there anything that they could be applying for rather than this personal property tax? Could, because we all have been in this pandemic, are there other incentives, ways to help the hotel perhaps through this money that's being put out for communities? Do you, have, have they tried any of that? Do you know?
I can't speak to that, alderman. I don't know.
Okay. So I want to speak to a little bit by someone, one of the people who's, one of all the people say about, you got to provide tax incentives. And I agree. Um, and I agree that sometimes tax incentives is need, I'm not one that supports it most of the times, but once in a while, it is needed. I guess my question is, but when does it end? Um, when a lot of these, I was here when this hotel was started, most people weren't. And so we, when, when we came aboard on these things, they said, well, we're going to do this, and I mean, I want to go back to the ninety-one when I got here. They would talk about doing all these things so that we would then move on and not continue to keep having to do tax abatement after tax abatement after tax abatement. But that does not seem to be what is working out. When someone gets in distress or when there's a problem, what seems to be the thing is, they will, let's just go back and find. Uh, another tax abatement to give to that, so. What do you ever envision where, that we would say, no, it's too much um, a tax abatement in this location in downtown? And maybe you need to look at something else, or are, are we always committed to forever and a day to do a tax abatement whenever somebody gets in trouble? Um, that we go to the city coffers and say that, well, okay. Um, you're in trouble, and so in order to save this, we're going to find some kind of additional tax abatement, because I guess what I find. Somewhat disturbing is that they're still in their original twenty-year tax abatement with four years left. And I know we let uh people fail all the time, grandmothers and grandparents and people who can't even pay their taxes. They lose their homes and their properties about not paying their taxes. And, but it seems like businesses and especially, and this is not Wall Street, because this is a Main Street, I look at this more as a Main Street. Do we ever envision when we say enough is enough and we've given you twenty-year tax abatement and you are just going to have to make it on your own? Or you are going to have to go into your profit margin? Because uh, you, uh, I think the Alderman from the nineteenth talked about that this was not a Hilton. Um, so Hilton's profit is not really counted in that, but if you're a venture capitalist and you're going out buying distressed properties. You do have a profit, you're not buying them to lose money. When do we set, do you have an, uh, uh, any kind of uh timeline of when we say no, or that's enough is enough? Or is it that we continue to give tax abatement?
Well, Alderman, it's a good question, you know, I, I wish I could sit here and, and say we're in a position with our, with a strong core of downtown where. You know, we don't have to, you know, provide incentives and be partners with, with these businesses and that they could do this all on their own, unfortunately. You know, we're not in that position, I mean, we were, I think things were really on the upswing. Um, I, I think, you know, the, the last year has, has set our downtown back considerably.
Yes.
Um, and, I mean, you, I, anyone who's driven down there, you know, talk to anyone who lives there or works there has seen it, I mean, it's. We're struggling, um, and, and this is, this is a, a company that's willing to make an investment, a substantial investment in a, in a property downtown. And is looking for a partnership and some help from the city. Uh, and, and I think in, in the current environment, we, we need to be a willing partner. Now, I agree, I wish we didn't have to, you know, do some sort of incentive, and I will say, I think, you know, a few years back. We probably would have been looking at extending the, the real property tax abatement. But we're now in a, in a position where we're recognizing that's not something that's either politically popular or probably good policy. So we're trying to get creative and use other ways um to both be a willing partner, provide a modest level of incentive. To help encourage investment downtown and, and that's what we came up with in this plan.
So, since I'm now the Chair of Streets, I've been sitting on the Parking Commission. And what you're saying is reflected in the parking income that we've come in, so I know that you're telling the truth, okay? So I'm normally at my loud note, so now I'm in a different position, and I tell people this all the time. Um, I'm real, I can't support this, I'm at a present now, okay, because I do. Acknowledge that we uh have some problems and that we want to get our downtown back started. I still don't believe we should do it at the expense of our neighborhoods, that's always been my thing, is that we put too much money in the downtown. At the expense of our neighborhoods and we haven't been putting the money where it was really intended to go. But I do acknowledge that there is a real problem. Um, and I have one other question, then I'm going to just get off, because I, I'm at a surprisingly present. Uh, is, uh, you talked about the full-time employees, are full-time, fifty full-time employees still? Um, employed and working, or were, were there fifty employees and have they had to lay off during this pandemic?
No, I believe there's still fifty full-time equivalent employees, um, Alderman, I, I, you know, I suspect at some point during the pandemic. You know, certain staff were furloughed and things, but I, I do know, like many other, you know, hotels. These downtown hotel operators were taking advantage of whatever federal dollars were available to try to keep their workforce employed uh as best they could.
So, um, and I just would, uh, still, because I'm finding all kinds of things that I'm helping people with, I've been helping people in the neighborhood to find ways to apply for money. So I would think that we would have some kind of committee or something over at SLDC that would be our Business Assistance Center. That would be helping people see if they qualify for federal money that's out there, including hotels, okay? So that's just my suggestion, I don't know if that really will, I can't support it, but I can't, I'm not going to say no. So that's the best I could do, because I usually would be a no. Thank you, I have no further.
Appreciate that, thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the thirteenth.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I, you know, I've been looking through Rockbridge Capital's website while we've been talking and, you know, I'm pretty impressed by the organization that they have. I'm looking at the different, different funds, they have seven different funds that they're using to invest in hotels, looks like. They've put, you know, millions and millions and millions and, you know, into these hotels. The fund size goes up to a billion dollars in their funds, the capitalization's at over five billion. Uh, so it looks to me like these people have some money. Uh, and I'm really in favor of investment in our neighborhoods and downtown. Um, but not as much in favor of uh property tax um abatements, especially when there's already one. Happening here, um, I am a no on this resolution because of the fact that I'm just not seeing. Financial need from this company, um, from what they're putting out about themselves. And, you know, I, I don't think that. There isn't a solution here or some sort of compromise, but as the resolution stands, I, I am a no, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the seventh, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, and I appreciate my colleagues and their thoughtful questions. Um, you know, as I stated at the outset, um, you know, I, I, we've got a, we've got some real challenges downtown, as the Alderman from the first alluded to. Um, this was, this was a, a, a project that was negotiated in good faith between the city, SLDC. The developer, uh, and this is what was agreed upon and what was passed by the Port Authority and sent over to us. Um, I am a man of my word and I, and I, uh, moving forward, hoping I can count on my colleagues' support. Uh, to approve this resolution and show that we are both a willing partner and supportive of our downtown businesses that are, that are. Trying to rebound after a very challenging year. Um, so with that, I renew my motion uh to final pass Resolution twelve.
Roll call.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from the tenth, and to the second that we. Up Resolution number twelve, that's going to request roll call, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Sias.
Present.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Iggracia.
No.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
No.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
No.
Alderman Schweitzer.
No.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
No.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
No.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vakoro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
No.
Alderman Con.
No.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Sixteen, I-votes. Eight, no-votes, and two voted present.
My vote is staying the motion, Alderman from the seventh, and adopted Resolution number twelve.
Resolution thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook, recommended the City of St. Louis Port Authority provide personal property tax abatement. And a sales tax exemption on construction materials, Astera St. Louis.
Alderman from the second, you recognize on the second reading Resolution number thirty-four.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm, I'm moved to finally pass Resolution thirty-four.
Been moved, Alderman from the second, and I missed that.
Fourteen.
Uh, second about Alderman from the fourteenth, Alderman from the second, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, so Resolution thirty-four is essentially, uh, the Port Authority Commissioner. Commission recently approved a revenue bond transaction. To offer Astera St. Louis LTD sales and use tax exemption and personal property um abatement. In connection with development of their fertilizer industrial facility along the waterfront. Uh, this project will create approximately forty jobs, um, with an average salary around sixty-six thousand a year. And I am in support of this, um. And that's pretty much it's all. Be happy to answer any questions, and ask for your favorable consideration.
Great, thank you, I, it's been moved, the second that we adopt Resolution number thirty-four, any discussion? It's been moved, and moved by Alderman from the second, second about Alderman from the fourteenth, that we, uh, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the second would yield?
Alderman from the second will yield to Alderman from the first.
Yes.
Okay, and um, thank you, Alderman, Astera St. Louis is located. Um, where, um, along the riverfront, is it downtown or is it? Because you're, you traverse the whole North St. Louis, so where is it located, where, where are they constructing this? Hello?
Okay, I can get the exact. Let me get the exact um location, I'm sorry.
It doesn't have to be exact, I mean, is it downtown?
So, yes, downtown.
Okay, and do they already have facilities, or is this their first facility there, I'm not familiar with it?
Um, I believe that they already have facilities, um, and when we talked to uh the owner of this.
Okay, so this is, is this a new building, or is this just, uh, they're going to bring a new product, or?
It's their product that they're bringing, they have the building.
Okay, and. So the construction material is for what, that's what I guess I'm trying to figure out.
For their, um, it's for their fertilizer that they're going to be shipping worldwide and. It's a, from my understanding, it's fertilizer that is used for food.
Okay. And, so I guess I'm missing this, so, um, I, I'm trying to understand, so their fertilizer is going to get. Their tax abatement and sales tax, I know that, that has to be wrong, so is it that the way it's going to be transported, I'm just trying to figure out?
It's for, I'm sorry, it's for the development of it, they're going to be making it, um, so that's, that's what it's for.
Uh, so they're going to be developing a new thing that would give you, um, uh, fertilizer to grow food?
Correct.
Okay, and. In the development. Why do we need the property tax abatement and the sales tax exemption, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand that.
I can find the answer to that question for you, um, but I don't have an answer for that right now.
Okay, so I know, it's already went, it went to committee, huh?
Yes.
Okay, um, and there was. Is there some place I can read about that, I, I, I guess I'm just finding it hard that we're giving a property tax and sale tax. To a product, usually I'm looking at that, it is going to be on a building.
I'm sorry, can you repeat yourself, somebody just yelled in the background?
I said, I'm finding it hard that we're giving personal property tax abatement and sales tax exemption for a product, so that's what I'm trying to understand. Usually, just like, uh, you know, we're redoing a hotel and we're redoing the rooms, or we're building a new building. But if they already have the building, um. I just don't know what that goes along with, so that's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm pulling up information right now. They are, they are rehabbing their building as well, so it is going for that.
Okay, so they're rehabbing, do they already have any property tax or sales tax on the building?
Uh, let's see. Not that I know of.
So they're not, um, so they don't have a, a property tax abatement or a sale tax exemption? Um, thus far, and how much is the property tax, how long is the property tax abatement, and how long is the sales tax exemption?
Okay, let me give you the direct. Information for that, it will be for. Ten years of twenty-five percent personal property tax abatement and a sales tax exemption on construction and materials for the project.
And would this fertilizer be used in all different kinds of foods, or is it specific, or do you know?
No, I don't know, he just stated to me that it will be used in foods. And shipped throughout the country and around the world.
And do you have any jobs associated with this particular venture?
Roughly, uh, roughly sixty.
Okay, full-time?
Yes.
The kind of jobs that you can actually make a living off of and not have to work two or three jobs, hopefully?
Absolutely, um, they're starting at sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Oh, yes, that's a good amount of, you can make your mortgage, okay. I have no further questions, thank you, Mr. President, members, and thank you, uh, Alderman from the second.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion, any further discussion, Alderman from the fourteenth.
I, I just would like to say that, uh, this is also a very sustainable fertilizer that's coming online. Um, and I rise in support of this. Um, I think that it'll be a good addition to the City of St. Louis as far as manufacturing, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, that, um, the Alderman from the fourteenth comments were, one of the questions I actually had was sort of more about the product and the sustainability, so. If that's, I don't know who that question would be more appropriate for, if the, if the sponsor has that information, or. Um, if Alderman uh from the fourteenth also uh would have more information about what. What the product is.
Alderman from the fourteenth, would you yield?
I shared a link, there was a, uh, article in the, uh, May twentieth, uh, Post-Dispatch about it.
Yeah, Alderman from the fourteenth, will you yield a question?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
All the one from the eighth, uh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Alderwoman for the fourteen. Um, did you say, where did you share that link that we could learn more about the product?
I shared it with the clerk.
Okay, is there, would you be able to drop that in the chat? We can just pull that up real quick?
Oh, I don't know about that.
If you, if you could find it. I I'm just, I'm very curious. I I think it's a great idea.
I can do what I can do here. I'll try, I'll try to do that and put it in the chat, okay?
Wonderful, yeah.
Alderwoman from the, um, second, uh, would you like to yield on this, on the same question to all of them for the eighth?
I'm sorry, I was just muted, okay? Um, from, from my understanding, this, yes, this, um, when we were in committee, the owner of this, um, facility did state that it was a very sustainable product, um, so I'm glad to hear that because I am very, um, concerned with some things that are going in our foods and, um, what we're consuming as, you know, and and especially for children, so, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, and I I completely agree, especially when we're dealing with the riverfront and our water sources. The the cleaner we can be on development on there, I think is is really important as well. Um, so thank you, I think, um, you know, the combination of both the equipment that is producing product and the, uh, the building improvements make this make a lot of sense, so, um, thank you, Alderwoman, for bringing this forward.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, the board. Uh, would the Alderwoman from the twelfth yield to three brief questions?
Uh, although all the one from the second. Did you want?
Yes.
Or did you want? Alderman from the twelfth, you wanted, did you ask that the Alderwoman from the second yields for questioning? I can.
Did I, I I did mean that, but did I say the Alderwoman from the twelfth?
Yes, you did, yes, you did.
Well, there we go, we're, here I am, with the Alder, with the dear Alderwoman from the second.
All right, all of them for the second, she she agrees to yield, please proceed, Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, President, the board, and thank you, Alderwoman from the second. I'm trying to cut back on my caffeine intake and I believe it shows. Three brief questions. Uh, this project is outlined by Astera, being upon the riverfronts, is there any potential environmental impact or would this improve the, sort of, their engagement with the environment or can you speak to that?
Um, I can ask, I'm sorry, I cannot at this moment.
Oh, that's okay. I appreciate, um, I appreciate that. Um, oh, that's the article there. With the, you said earlier that they have currently sixty positions. This seeks to create an additional forty positions, so would that be, you know, essentially they're seeking to create a hundred positions with an average salary of about sixty-seven thousand dollars, correct, or?
Now, this will be a total of sixty positions.
Okay, so they currently have twenty, but they seek to introduce forty new positions?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I just, uh, I appreciate clarification. And then, um, are, do you know, or can you speak or not, any unions represented by, uh, at this facility or so on and so forth? Would be represented by?
At this time, I do not know if they have any unions.
That's okay, that's okay, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate your responses and, uh, I yield back, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Alderman from the fifth, you recognize?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, members of the board. Would the Alderwoman from the second yield for a question?
Alderman?
Yes.
The second, uh, Alderman from the fifth, please proceed.
Yes, uh, Alderwoman from the second, does your documentation, uh, provide the exact street address of, uh, the requister?
Um, let me look it up, give me one second. Let's see, I have, uh, sorry, I'm working on a phone instead of my computer. And it is. I do not have that exact address, uh, address, but I can get it to you.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. President, I yield back.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of board. If I remember correctly, doing HUDs, um, believe the owner said this is a proprietary product that's very environmentally friendly and it kind of stays on the surface. It does not permeate the soil. Um, whereas I guess there are other fertilizers out there that it can sometime contaminate the water source. Um, but I think he was, if I remember correctly, Alderman from the second, if I jogged your memory, agree with me, but I'm I'm reasonably sure he had made that comment that this is very environmentally friendly and it kind of stays, you know, on the surface and it doesn't, um, cause harm to the environment. Thank you.
All right, uh, any further, any further discussion, any further discussion? All the one from second, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
The move by all the one from second, seconded by the all along from the fourteenth that we adopt resolution number thirty-four, all in favor signify percent, aye?
Aye.
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 Pose, motion carries.
Resolution thirty-six sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Middlebrook, approval of the City of St. Louis Senior Citizens Service Fund Budget.
All the one from the second, you recognize on second reading, resolution thirty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, I'm sorry.
Thirty-six, you recognize, second, resolution thirty-six.
Thank you, I request unanimous consent on resolution thirty-six.
Would you like to move for adoption of resolution thirty-six?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, I would like to move for adoption of resolution thirty-six.
I move by second by all in from the twenty-second and, um, there's some, and and all the one for me. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor signify percent, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution nine sponsored by Alderman Boyd and Alderman Vaquero, crime, I'm sorry, Crime Prevention Program Funds.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize, uh, on, for the report on resolution number nine.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, members of board, I'd like to report, um, resolution number nine came out of committee. As amended, um, there was a lot of arm twisting, a lot of, uh, fist thrown, um, challenging debate. Um, Alderman from the twenty-sixth, uh, ward did a phenomenal job advocating for an organization. And there was a lot of work, um, put into making these recommendations. I want to thank the subcommittee for, for all the hard work that was put into this, and I'm happy to report out the organizations and the award amounts who are the recipients of the current allocation. We have the Wyman Center awarded twenty-five thousand dollars, Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Eastern Missouri seventy-five thousand dollars, St. Louis Youth Jobs ninety thousand dollars, Boys and Girls Club of Greater St. Louis ninety thousand dollars, Jeans Slays Boys and Girls Club ninety thousand dollars, Prisoner Performing Arts twenty-five thousand dollars, Mission St. Louis fifty thousand dollars, the Twenty-Second Judicial Court, Family Court Juvenile Division fifteen thousand, Thomas Dunn Learning Center forty thousand, Harambe Youth Training Program forty-five thousand, St. Louis Story Stitcher seventy thousand, likewise, formerly Kingdom House eighty-five thousand, Pianos for People forty thousand, Throwing and Growing Foundation ninety-five thousand, Link St. Louis Incorporated thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, Young Voices with Action forty thousand, five hundred dollars, Urban Twenty-One forty thousand, and Good Journey Development Foundation fifty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Uh, members of the board, Mr. President, that is the report out of the Public Safety Committee unanimous approval of the aforementioned organizations. Hello?
Second. I was, I said, thank you for that report, Alderman, um, madam.
That is the extent of second reading, resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Miss Lane is unfinished business.
We have no.
Announcements.
June fifteenth, Quakes will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar, Public Safety will have a meeting at one PM via via webinar. Wednesday, June sixteenth, Ways and Means will have a meet at nine AM. Thursday, the seventeenth, school quarter, ten AM via webinar. And Friday, June eighteenth, the office will be closed in honor of Juneteenth holiday.
Thank you, all the one from the first.
President, members of the board, there will be a street meeting on Tuesday at eleven A, eleven AM.
Madam clerk, please make note of that.
Oh, noted.
Any further discussion, all the one from twenty-sixth?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would just like to invite everyone to an event, especially your children in the community to an event this Saturday, tomorrow, at Sherman Park behind our beloved World Community Center. This is a proactive event, um, and when I say proactive, you know why? This is put on by the Fifth District, St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, under the leadership of Captain Mueller and Officer Deanna Jenkins. This is a spring fest. Everything is free for children. This is an event where we talk about, we want to reimagine public safety and all these type of things that we are gonna use to build trust and communication between us and the police department, and I am excited to support them on this event, and I'm excited that it's in the twenty-sixth ward this year. Again, there'll be free food, free games, free fun. They're gonna be landing, actually landing a helicopter on Sherman Park, and the kids will be able to go and engage and get on the helicopter, which, if you didn't know, I've learned that that also engages, um, an interest in STEM. So please tell your communities I will be, uh, forwarding the flyer. Tell your communities and your networks to bring their children out to Sherman, uh, Park tomorrow from eleven-thirty to two PM and help us to, uh, bridge these wedges between us and our public police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all the one from fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, the Education and Youth Matters Committee will be meeting on June twenty-second at eleven AM to uh, hear an update from St. Louis Public Schools regarding, um, the school closures, their framework envisioning plan, and also the calls to action, um, for St. Louis City Government that came out of the school closure plan. Uh, so please, uh, put that on your calendars. Thanks.
Thank you. All the one from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I would just like to remind people, um, if you can check on your seniors, to please do so. I have gone to several homes of seniors and they still have their heat on. And, uh, that's a little dangerous with, you know, we're finally experiencing summer. So, um, just please check on your seniors. Um, it is dangerous to have the heat on and then it's supposed to be like ninety-five degrees today. Um, I've just encouraged people to put on some sweats if you're cold, but turn the heat off. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for that public service announcement. Everybody, please make note of that, uh, that, uh, you could save somebody's lives. All the one from nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I just wanted to congratulate Monica Butler. She's having the opening of, um, a minority-owned film stage TV, uh, operation and also, uh, the ability to provide, um, music, uh, medium as well. She's a very talented young woman. Uh, she has been here in the City of St. Louis and done a lot with artists all over. Uh, but she, she was determined and she has made it. Uh, and so it's on YouTube and on, uh, Facebook. Uh, but she's opening her facility in a downtown area. Uh, and I'm just excited for her because for us to have a minority-owned facility that can make movies and also produce TVs, uh, for folks, it is just incredible. Uh, and I'm, I just have to, at some point, I need to give her a resolution because I've watched her go through the years of building and learning, and now she has achieved. So good luck to Monica, and, uh, my last thing is, uh, I wanted to give recognition to the passing of one of our residents of the City of St. Louis, former city employee as a deputy sheriff. Uh, very active in the nineteenth ward. She was what they call a right hand of Senator J Banks during the time that he was in office. Uh, so Francis Shelby has transcended, and, uh, she lived in the nineteenth ward for at least forty-something years that I know about. Uh, and, uh, she's very active. Uh, she's gonna be missed. Uh, but she, she kept all our senior citizens informed on what the political climate was. Uh, and, uh, if you don't mind, could we just take a moment of silence for, uh, Francis Shelby?
I ask everyone to please join us in a moment of silence for the passing of Francis Shelby. Thank you, all the one from the nineteenth.
Thank you.
Alderman from the eighteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This comes Saturday, tomorrow, the Urban League, uh, is have, Clean Sweep is having a cleanup in the eighteenth ward. It starts at nine o'clock, uh, tomorrow. We will be meeting behind the Sears Building on, and that's on, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, between page. I hope everyone can attend. I'm also encouraging all uh, eighteen ward residents who are able, physically able, to come out and check your back and front and also check on your neighbors and if, and help them if they, uh, need help cleaning up because we need to learn to love our neighbors as we do ourselves. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I also have a cleanup to announce, probably not a huge surprise for people. Uh, the Grand and Bates litter eliminators are doing a cleanup tomorrow morning at eight AM at Grand and Bates. We're gonna be going in all four directions, so please come join us. Uh, the, another thing to announce tomorrow, um, is Tuesday, Representative Steve Bots and I are hosting a town hall for the thirteenth ward at seven PM at Epiphany Lutheran Church, and I hope people are able to make it. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any fur, second. There it is. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we excuse the all the twenty-first and the all one from the twenty-seventh from necessary absence.
Move by all them from the tenth, entertain a second on that motion. I'll second that. Second by all them from twenty-third, any discussion? All in favor signify percent, aye?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Oh.
Motion carries. Boy, nobody ever votes no on that, on that. All, all, all the one from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn the meeting to next Thursday, June seventeenth at ten AM.
Move by from the tenth, saying about all them from twenty-fifth, all in favor signify percent, aye?
Aye.
Pose, we stand adjourned.